Copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. An automatic external defibrillator is available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, September 22nd, 2015. Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, October 6th, 2015, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rule or increased value on property. Sir, most.
Your approval.
Your second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, there are three resolutions. The protest that is listed there has been taken off, it's been taken care of, there's no need for executive session. Is there a motion to approve the resolutions and adjourn? Any questions or comments? Please vote. We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please. Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, September 22nd, 2015, and item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, September 29th, 2015. Many questions or comments? Please vote. The consent agenda, our items A through M, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Is the disability insurance question in here?
Okay, do you want that pulled out?
No, I just have some questions.
All right.
We apparently are switching over from a disability insurance coverage scheme currently that comes out of the pension fund to one that, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, would come out of the general budget?
It would come out of the employee insurance fund.
Right. And we're changing carriers as well, is that correct?
Yes.
From the current, is it Mutual of Omaha?
Mutual of Omaha, yeah.
To Cigna, and what's the net impact of that changeover?
I think Diane has the exact numbers.
Diane Carlson, Deputy County Administrator. The county's benefits consultant went out for an RFP and the quote we received back from the incumbent Mutual of Omaha was $600,000 a year, and Cigna's was $350,000 a year approximately. So it's the difference between that and the premiums, at least on an annual basis. So $250,000 difference.
So that's roughly a 50% reduction in premium costs, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And in addition to that, we cover all claims for the first five years of disability, is that right?
Yes, I believe it's five years as self-insured, the county pays out the claims to the employees who apply and are approved for disability benefits. It's about, it's at 70% of their current salary.
Okay.
And then after that period, if they're still permanently disabled, then Cigna would take over those claims as fully insured.
Right. Which is the same terms and conditions as our current coverage with the mutual policy, right?
That's right, they match the same terms and conditions as mutual.
And there are offset provisions in the disability payments to account for Social Security disability payments, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
And are there also offsets for workers' comp payments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the, as near as we can tell, average outlay currently that we pay directly to disabled employees in that first five-year period would be, you know, approximately what annually?
I don't know the exact amount, but we probably have three or five people a year that might be applying for disability. We currently have, I believe, approximately 30 people on disability, but most of those are in the, you know, have moved forward to the fully insured part.
Okay.
So that would just be whatever their salaries are, 70% of their salaries. So it's probably, you know, a couple hundred thousand a year, I would imagine.
All right.
We can get the definite, we can get the specifics for you.
Fine, but, you know, the low hundred thousands would be the approximate range.
Yes, I think that's correct.
Okay. And going forward then, that would be a budgeted item in our regular general budget rather than an expense to our pension fund, is that correct?
Right, it would come out of the employee benefits account.
So that would have marginally positive impact on the pension fund for the good, right?
Yes, and also the premiums would be coming out of that instead of the pension fund.
Yeah, I believe, Commissioner, it would increase the pension fund, just this change would increase it immediately, be funding about half a percent.
Okay. And the term of this agreement is how many years?
It's a three-year agreement. It's effective July 1 of 2015.
Well, thank you. You know, I wanted to dig into this a little bit because the more I looked at it, the better it sounded, and I want to commend our staff and the folks who put together the RFP for going out into the marketplace and getting us the best deal that they can. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you. And no further questions on the consent agenda? There has been a motion and a second, please vote.
Deanna? Deanna, do you mind coming down for a moment?
Deana Vansicle Extension.
First of all, and you can state your name, go ahead.
Deana Vansicle Extension.
First of all, I want to thank you and your people out there for hosting our strategic retreat and planning session last week on Thursday all day. Really appreciate that a lot. Mary Ann, I want to also thank you for a good job. The moderator was really great and had us all participating, and it was really good. The other thing I want you to know is, at times, we always want to look at all our options, you'd be included, and several of us have discussed, Commissioner Kavanaugh and I talked a little bit this morning, because he heads up the Administrative Services Committee, and just thinking about an idea, you know, your offices are, have been there a long, long time, we own that building, as I understand it, you know, we may look at 156 in Maplewood, we want to put that building to great use and not be leasing other properties as time goes on, and so it's something we consider, but I want you to know that whatever we do, we will listen to you, and I don't want you to feel like you need to agree with one of us or all of us, you can always voice your opposition to ideas that we might have, because that's a healthy thing, and we respect the job that you do, so.
I appreciate that, and I would like to be included, of course, and I will never disagree when all of you are looking at me, but I will on their side.
And I think, you know, I'm a person that, and maybe it's just my own insecurities, I always like to look at all the options.
Yep.
And then be sure there's a way out, too.
Absolutely.
That's why I keep that door back there open.
Smart, clever.
Anyway, thanks a lot, and again, we really appreciate it last Thursday.
Absolutely, thank you.
Take care.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Just following up on some of Commissioner Morgan's comments, we are going to be scheduling going forward monthly meetings of the Administrative Services Committee to discuss county space needs. This is coming off of our strategic planning session relative to the long-term needs of the county, and of course, having all just been at the lovely Extension Office building, it would be one of the properties that we own, that we would want to discuss in the overall mix. We'll also be discussing the upcoming bond issue, and, you know, what we need to do and include in that. So you should be getting notice, the meetings we thought might be more effectively scheduled if they were scheduled prior to county board meetings, and so they are going to be beginning at eight o'clock here, and there'll be one in October, one in November, and one in December.
That's great, I agree, that's going to be a good idea for us, and Claire, you know.
Because of your Building Commission service expertise, you can participate, give us those ideas, too, and I know we spoke about some of our leasing and that kind of thing.
Okay, we'll move on to citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda?
Hello, Alter Speaker.
Good morning, Laura.
Hi, my name is Laura McCormick, I have a question. I have been corresponding with you, Commissioner Borgeson, about getting some information on attorney fees.
On what, Laura?
Attorney fees.
Oh, yeah.
There was data that was provided to the folks who were the hired consultants from the NCSC, and this chart was in a report that was published, and I believe Mr. Curtis was the source of this material. Do you think it will be forthcoming soon?
Yeah, he answered me and said that he will update that for us.
Oh, okay, because I hadn't really talked to my own elected commissioner, so I just wasn't sure. Okay, thank you for your help.
Okay, you bet. We'll move to committees, the first being the finance, if there's nothing other than the budget finance report from the budget committee.
Correct, that's it.
Human resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented, if there's no other questions or comments on that. The weekly CAO report on staff assaults, Patrick?
Nothing to report.
And legislative items, nothing on this juncture. Item four, discussion slash action regarding setting the salary for the Douglas County Election Commissioner and Deputy Election Commissioner for the four-year term beginning January 1, 2016. Is there, there is a, let me read the resolution here, it's calling for a, to set those salaries for the election commissioner at 86,795 for the year of 2016, 88,530 for 2017, 90,300 for 2018, and 90,106 for 2019. There is a further be it resolved that the deputy election commissioner is hereby set at 47,559 for 2016, 48,510 for the year 2017, 49,480 for the year 2018, and 50,470 for the year 2019. Is there a motion or any discussion? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I think Commissioner Rogers might have provided us with some information regarding comparables in Lancaster County, and if memory serves me, our election commissioner was roughly comparable, but there was a significant disparity in the deputy election commissioner compensation levels. Is that right, Chris, as I recall?
I didn't provide the data, but I brought the question up because in the bigger conversation that we've been having about comparables, so it didn't, you know, I don't know where the body is on it, but, you know, we were lower, our deputy was, in Lancaster County, I just brought the question up.
Diane provided that.
Sorry.
Diane Carlson.
Okay. Diane, could you speak to that, the disparity that I think existed between our deputy election commissioner and Lancaster County's deputy election commissioner?
Yeah, their, their election commissioner salary was pretty close to ours, it was also in the 80s, as I recall, but the deputy was higher, it was in the 60s, I think they tag it at 75% of the, of the salary, but it was in the 60s as compared to the 47,000 that we currently have for our deputy.
Which is, you know, a significant, like, 50% disparity, and considering that we're the largest county with the biggest number of registered voters, it kind of jumped out at, maybe we should take a little closer look at that. Now, I understand from reading the resolution that we do have some time constraints relative to establishing the new rate of pay, I believe it's 60 days before the first of the year, which would bring us back into, you know, October sometime, but what I would like to do, you know, for the reasons stated regarding the disparity in the comparables, and for a couple of other reasons, one is to maybe link this to other compensation questions that we've been talking about and talked about at the strategic planning session last week, and to allow the input of Commissioner Boyle, who's unfortunately not able to join us today, who's actually a former election commissioner, and I certainly think that we could all benefit by his input. So for those reasons, I would ask that maybe we lay this over for discussion, recognizing that we're going to have to do something, you know, in the relative near future, but we do have a few weeks' time to, to research a little more.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, what is the percentage of increase we're looking at?
2%.
2%? Okay, thank you. All of these.
Commissioner Duda?
I just want to throw in that it's always been my understanding that, at least for Douglas County, the deputy election commissioner is considered a part-time position, and that's why we have such a, and I have no idea how they are set up in Lancaster County, but that's the rationale historically we have used for why there was such a big gap between the two offices, although I would point out if that's the case, here's a part-time position, we're putting at $50,000, and we're afraid to move ours because we're part-time, so.
Well, and, you know.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
That, again, begs the question of, why would they have a full-time deputy? I understand, and that's something that I'd like to, you know, kind of look into the result, a full-time deputy at 50% more pay for, I'm going to say, maybe not 50% fewer registered voters, but a lot fewer registered, tens of thousands of fewer registered voters. So, you know, for all those reasons, I'd ask that maybe we lay this over and do a little more research into it.
Any other questions or comments? It was on for discussion slash action, we can hold this over until the following board meeting for further discussion.
Do we know when Commissioner Boyle will be back?
It should be next week.
Next week?
Okay.
Maybe, Diane, you could do some inquiries to Lancaster County for us to see where and how they got to where we are, and to our Douglas County election people to see where and how they got to where they are, give us maybe a historical view, and also factor in the number of registered voters in both jurisdictions, and I would say maybe include Sarpy County as well.
Yes, I can do that. I do believe that in Lancaster County, and I'll check on this, I think that their election commissioner also acts as jury commissioner, whereas here at the district court does not. So that, that might be part of it, but I will, I can follow up with them and.
Thank you.
Get some input.
All right, no further discussion on that, we'll put that on for next week. Is, there is need for executive session for labor negotiations? Is there a motion to go into executive session? Is there a second? Please vote.